Good evening, everyone, or good afternoon, everyone. This is the City of Shelbyville Mayor and City Council Special Call Meeting. It is about two o'clock, and we welcome everyone that's visiting with us today. And at this time, I'll call this meeting to order. And the second thing I'll do is ask for a roll call from our senior reporter, Lisa.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Bellhaus.
Here.
Councilmember Creasy.
Here.
Councilmember Bladens.
Here.
Councilmember Turnbull.
Here.
Councilmember Ewing.
Here.
Councilmember Moway.
Here.
Mayor, you did have a form, all made to our press.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item is to adopt the agenda. Has everybody had a chance to look over that, I hope? Do I have a motion to adopt? Okay, second?
Second.
All right. All right, any discussion about it? If not, let's, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any vote, okay. Our next item is citizen comments. Lisa, do we have anybody signed up for that?
I do not have anybody signed up for that.
Okay, thank you. All right, the business. On the number five there, A is a review of the current large city capital and development projects, and we have a number of them, T.K., and Lisa, and Scott, and all of them putting those things together. I hope you've had a chance to look at those. They'll be our estimated cost, funding sources, and timelines. So, Scott, you want to take us through that?
Yes, sir. Mayor, the way we'd like to do it is let T.K. kind of walk us through the spreadsheet, and I'll have a couple of comments, and then of course, Hugh and the council.
Okay. Dave, well, all right. Smith, Parker?
Yeah, Scott said he could provide the color, and I think we all know what color that is. Probably orange.
All right.
Okay, the first, and I'm not an expert on any of these projects, I'm just talking about numbers here. So flood pumps is on page one there. At the top there is the original estimate. We were fortunate that when we actually bid the flood pumps themselves, we came in $870,000 underbid, which was great. We've only paid, I think it's 15% down so far, but then you see the Grigs and Maloney fee. I corresponded with Will in the last few days, and at the present time, they're shooting for a bid opening for the installation late October, first half of November. Construction anticipated to begin in January 26 and be completed in August 26. In this year's budget, when you subtract out, well, I have $4,395,000 in the budget. We know we owe the remainder of the flood pumps, we know we owe the remainder of Grigs and Maloney. That leaves $2.4 million toward the installation rehab. Of course, we don't know until we know, so until we get the bids, we don't know what we'll need. But even if that's a little short, since they won't be completed till probably next August, we'll have July and August of next year's budget anyway, that we can budget more if we need it to. So that's kind of where we are on the flood pumps that I know about.
And that's all the ARP money that we had put back originally for the flood pump.
Well, it's a switch out of ARP money. Technically, we spent the ARP money on operating expenses, but that freed up the same amount of our money to use for these type things, so.
All right, thank you, Karen.
But if you have any technical flood pump questions, that would need to be somebody else.
And what were the dates that you had again?
Of when?
As far as construction.
Okay, at the bottom there, the green.
Yeah.
Bid opening for installation.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay.
And then the constructions began January 2026?
Yes, and he said it would be about eight months, so he was hoping it would be completed in August of 26.
Sounds good.
So about a year from now.
All right, thank you.
You got on that?
Questions?
Okay. Second page is Fairfield Pike. We've had Grisham Smith as our consultant since 2019. We're currently in the right-of-way phase, which is estimated to cost $1 million. I don't think we've obtained any properties yet, I don't think, at the present time, anybody's chosen to donate, I guess that could change, but I think we're getting ready to start the process of maybe trying to purchase right-of-way. The current estimate for the project based on Amendment Two and the fact that right-of-way's now estimated at $1 million is that 5592176. The state portion of that, as it stands now, is $3.5 million, which leaves a local match of two. We've already spent 85 local, we have 200,000 local budgeted this year, which comes to 1.7. Now, I have spoken to T.DOT today, in fact, in the last 30 minutes, to get kind of a more current update. In the green there, that little paragraph in the green, where we typically get 300,000 or so a year of small cities funding. Jason McCoy just told me, shared with me a few minutes ago, we got 332,000 in FY24 and 339,000 in FY25, and we should get about the same amount at the beginning of '26. Now, the amendment we have right now is Amendment Two. These extra funds need to be incorporated into an Amendment Three, plus we had moved some money between phases, we took some out of construction to go to right-of-way. We kind of need a quote cleanup amendment that I told him we'd be talking to him about later. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that 1.7 will probably be less, because each year we get to keep adding about 300,000 from the state. Now, that's great, but keep in mind, we may have some inflationary things happening on the construction side, so I'm not saying we'll gain fully what we get, but probably, you know, I would say the majority of it. Does that make sense, Scott?
And I want to point out, right now, we're looking at 1.7 million per day, but when you count in, going with the low average of 300,000 a year, that's 1.2 million that will be coming to us from the state. So to me, a $500,000, $600,000 of whatever funds needed, that's a whole lot better than 1.7 million. Just want to point that out. Because it will go through 2029 before this budget closes down.
So we'll be getting that 300,000 each year?
Yeah.
And then I guess once that's completed, we can start using that 300,000 a year on another project, if I'm understanding that correctly. Any questions on Fairfield?
Can I ask you a question on this project? This one was before, that's, you know, both on, what's the scope of this project? I mean, it's always been called the Fairfield Pike Project. Are we just dealing with the one intersection? How, it says sidewalks and stuff, how big of an area it covers?
Yeah, it's, goes down to Dairy, Fairfield, where that goes, it'll be all four intersections there, so they have new signalization, center turn lanes, sidewalk on one side of it.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's pretty, well, it started in, I think, 2015.
It goes all the way up to the wall, or is it north?
That's the order, right.
So we're trying to wonder, will the sidewalks actually be on?
The side of the church, the side of the church. There's not enough right-of-way on the other side, those buildings are really close, so there's not, it'd be south. But anyway, yeah, they'd be on the side of the church, that's where we have the most rate.
Okay.
Okay. The next one is river overlooks. We got a grant for this project in '21, signed a contract with T.DOT in '22, and at that time, the project was estimated to be 1.5 million. We hired Neil Schaefer in February '23. When you factor in their, their cost, our current construction estimate is now 2.7 million, so the overall project's now estimated to be about 3 million. When you take this, and I think I put this in the email a while back, when you take the 1.1 off, that's a local 1.9, now we've already paid them 215,000, we have 300,000 budgeted this year, so we're down to local funds needed in the future of 1.4. But please notice the green paragraph area, Whitney of Neil Schaefer is pursuing other avenues to, for funding for this, other grants, and Scott knows more about that than I do, but I think we should know from those grants, maybe by the time we're ready to go to bid next spring or something. Okay, so fingers crossed that we'll get some other grants to help with that 1.4 local.
Yes, we've already funded the request put in with the carbon reduction program, and the request was to fund the quote "last dollar," unquote, to address the 1.4 million. And there's only, these funds are broken down in categories by population, and right now, there's only two active grants going on under the carbon reduction program. One of them in Oak Ridge for 2.5 million, and another one in Honefester for 1.7 million. So confidence is high, you know, that we'll be able to get this. However, it's like a 90-10 match, worst case scenario, 80-20 match. However, on your upcoming September agenda cycle, we're going to have a request to do a resolution for additional transportation alternative program funds. Now, on the T.DOT website, it'll say, oh, the maximum we'd like to give is $1 million. Well, we're proof that they'll give more than that if the project is worth it, and I've been involved in other projects where they gave up the 1.8 billion, 2 billion. So between the two grant opportunities, that 1.4 million will be reduced significantly, at a minimum, 80%.
You see anything major that might come up, other than what we've got already, as far as all that construction on the, on that bluff above the river and all those kind of things? Have you received any other extra costs or anything like that?
Not at this time.
Right-of-way's not a problem?
That'll be addressed in the coming days, hopefully. And we've already, I say we, the city council has already set aside money for right-of-way acquisition and negotiation, so that should be for.
And the extra cost on this one has been because of the delay, probably, just because of the increase in cost over the few years that we've been looking at. They started this, what, 2019?
Probably before, my time.
We got the grant in 2021, we got the grant in '21.
All right, I'm good, anybody else? Okay.
All right, the next is Madison Street sidewalks. We were awarded a multimodal access grant for this project in November '22 in the amount of 1.1 million. It's sidewalk construction on Madison from North Main to East Lane, a 90-10 match. Grigs and Maloney is overseeing this project for us. It's a local match of 123,719. I have that full amount budgeted this year. It was a small number, you never really know when these things are going to end or not end, and I thought, just put it all in there. And, you know, if it, if it doesn't get to that point this year, we'll just roll it over. But this, this project is still in the NEPA environmental phase, you know, sometimes those can take a long time, as I'm sure you're aware. So I don't really have a, I don't know what the date's going to be on that. Depends on what they run into, I guess. Unless Buck or Scott knows more.
We're working with T.DOT about how they go through their process. Are these sidewalks kind of light poles in the middle of them, or are they going to be?
We need to be.
I was just about to ask.
They need to be uniform with the others we have, yes.
Yeah.
No comment, that's just.
That'll be.
We're about to get Dairy Street, haven't they moved some, are they going to move some on Dairy Street?
No, we've kind of moved the sidewalk on Dairy Street. One of the things.
So you moved it out into the roadway, the sidewalk?
Yeah. It was extra width on Dairy, a lot of people didn't know where to drive on Dairy, so people were trying to pass each other and everything, so we brought it in to eliminate everything being in the sidewalk. There's still challenges at corners and stuff, but I think we've done a pretty good job.
I'm just concerned about wheelchairs, things like that, from the side of it. And those big trucks on Madison Street.
Yeah.
They're always knocking mirrors off and everything else, because everything's so close on Madison Street. This is a good grant out here, not having to spend a whole lot of money.
Multimodal grants are deep best.
Yeah, not trying to get them.
They're 90-10.
Any other questions? Okay.
All right, the next is the Dairy Street sidewalks project. We got a CDBG grant for this project in December '23 for 550,000 for sidewalk construction for a portion of Dairy Street, it's an 86-14% grant. Grigs and Maloney's overseeing this grant as far as the engineer, and South Central Tennessee Development Center is, Development District, excuse me, is administering this grant, and so they're dealing back and forth with the state as far as submitting requests for reimbursement and so forth. Our local match at 14% is 104,762. We've already paid some of that, so, I've got the full amount budgeted in this year's budget. And it's in the construction phases, I'm sure everybody's seen, so it should be completed soon.
What does that mean for the Development District?
I didn't list it, because honestly, I didn't know exactly how much it was, I didn't look that up. I would guess it's probably in the neighborhood, probably 30,000 or so, but it's incorporated within the project estimate. That 654 has South Central, Grigs and Maloney, and the construction all in that price. So I should have looked that up, but I didn't, so you got me on that one. I'm sorry. I can, I'll let you know, I can send an email to everybody. Let me make a note of that. They bill quarterly, and I'm not even sure I've paid them yet, but anyway, sorry, I didn't have that answer. Any other questions on that one?
Okay, okay.
Okay. The next one's kind of a long wrangling page that I put together, it's the SIA road that we call it, State Industrial Access Road going to Project Cardinal, AKA DUCSON. So we had signed a contract with the state of Tennessee that we would go 50-50 on right-of-way utilities. Originally, that was estimated 341,000. We had to send them a check up front for half of that, which was 17500. Through the 231 North Business Park Board, they accepted that as a shared expense, so Bedford County reimbursed us for half of that. Also during this process, DUCSON agreed to pay 50,000 for it. So that's kind of where we are right now. I had reached out to T.DOT in July and again last week. In fact, she responded on Saturday morning, this past Saturday. At this point, they've only spent about 150,000 total on right-of-way utilities, so that means they've only spent 75,000 of our 17500 so far, but we will not know if we're over or under till the project's complete, and they're not going to start back on it until FY27, because they're waiting for other stuff out there to kind of get finished, the Walmart distribution and stuff like that. So it's going to be probably two, three more years before we know where we are, but there's nothing in the budget this year, and we won't need it, because they're not doing anything right now on that. Hope that made a little bit sense.
That did, when I first came into the office, when you're talking about that. We also received the money back for the inspection we paid for with the state.
We did.
DUCSON sent us a check, didn't it?
They did, for the fire marshal inspection, they did, they reimbursed, I think it was 56,700.
I don't know whether you knew that or not, but that one is.
They did. We got that reimbursement in the last month and a half.
Okay.
I like phones coming in, not going in. All right, so the next. All right, so the next one is soccer fields at HB Griffin Park. We got a LPRF grant for two point five million. It required a two point five million local match. The city matched that by one point seven, three million of property, and we committed to seven hundred and seventy thousand cash. Wold Architects, or however you say that, is the consultant for this project. I only budgeted half this year, and it approved budget half, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, and we plan to put that in next year. From talking to Trevor Friday, I guess it was, they're anticipating to have final plans and grading package by mid-September and possibly a groundbreaking in October. The project's expected to take approximately twelve to eighteen months. Trevor, if I said any of that wrong, just holler. Don't be bashful around. So.
And we will be working, if you folks remember those lines that night when we voted on that, all the people that were out there, we will be working on maybe folks that might want to reimburse the city and for some of that work we can. Soccer fields are, they're really needed, so I'm glad that we're gonna be able to follow that block.
And I believe it's Six Fields, I think it's Six Fields we're gonna end up with.
That'll be good. Any other questions?
I would also, at some point, Trevor, to kind of see a proposal of the layout of what your expectations are compared to what, call your catering, you know, your tournaments and your vision, I guess it is, pretty much. I'd like to see that at some point. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Are you approaching this as a income producing?
I'm approaching this as a service to the city, and I'm approaching this as, as additional revenue, yes. But I believe that the biggest source of revenue that we can get is gonna be through sales tax dollars with tournaments and that kind of thing. So, buying our gas, buying our food, if we get a hotel stay in our hotels, those types of things are where we stand to make the most economic impact.
All right, the next is Airport Capital Projects. This is the six million dollar grant we got, and we need to match it with six hundred thousand, which actually gives us six point six to work with. The projects were an aircraft run-up area, midfield taxiway, corporate hangar, terminal ADA remodel, and terminal parking lot. And from talking to Paul, you know, any of those first ones I read off kind of take more than you think. It's gonna be the parking lot that's gonna be smaller or not exist. That's what they're shooting to do last. I budgeted half of our match in this year's budget, which would leave the remaining three or a thousand for next year's budget. I just talked to Paul, I guess it was yesterday. Design has been completed for the run-up area and midfield taxiway, and both of those are gonna go out to bid together because they feel like, you know, with more volume, they'll get a better price. And then all, I did find this out, all projects covered by this six million dollar grant have to be under contract and obligated by next June thirty. So, they said when this first came out, that sounded like a long time away, but it's getting pretty close. So, sounds like those are gonna be moving pretty fast, in theory.
Now, Paul told us about, I remember in a council meeting, that possibly there was another grant that they were gonna get that might cover this six hundred thousand dollars. Have you heard any word on that?
He did mention that. That is nothing that's definite, but he's, he's looking into that. I didn't want to put it on here because it's not a for-sure thing, but that's still a possibility.
Question? Ms. Kay?
All right, the next is the Riverview District project. I guess the first thing that was approved by the council was Phase One, obviously, in July of twenty-four. And the first thing we did was y'all appropriated a hundred and eighty-five thousand plus closing cost for properties. It was mainly two properties, I believe. One had three different owners, somebody owed fifty percent, somebody else twenty-five percent, and somebody else twenty-five percent. At this point, we bought all properties except the one-quarter interest property that had to be condemned, that has not been closed yet. But we estimate that to be about twenty-five thousand, and should be happening shortly, I believe. Next, in last year's budget, y'all approved seven hundred and fifty thousand, which was five hundred thousand in capital projects, two fifty in the hotel motel fund. As you know, Coral Construction just completed the project at the Fly Parking Area, which also included, I think, conduit underground for utilities. That's, they've gotten their final payment now. Y'all also approved a hundred and fifty thousand for Phase One B, which was to put utilities underground. At the end of June, we paid two of those utilities. I think both of those wanted prepayments. We still have two more to go. So, of the seven fifty last year, we spent six hundred and forty-one thousand. I didn't roll that over, but we will need to at some point through a budget amendment because it's hard to estimate what you need to roll over when you don't know if you're gonna finish or not. In the actual budget, y'all approved, there were no funds budgeted for the Riverview District. However, at last week's meeting, I guess it was, y'all approved two hundred and fifty thousand for the new, I guess it's for street, for street improvements. So, that's gonna be getting underway, I assume. And you would think, in my little summary, you'd think, "Well, why didn't we end at two fifty? Why are we ending at two seventy?" The reason is, the council approved two ten in a budget amendment for the property acquisition, and the properties are probably gonna only cost us one ninety. So, that gave us about twenty thousand extra. So, if you have specific questions on this, Scott's right up there. He knows a lot more about this than I do.
Well, why hasn't AT&amp;T and United, have they not given you an estimate bill? Did they do, do some work there too? They had some utilities.
If they do that, they should bill. They just, so, they did it. Buildership, both entities have been on site. Matter of fact, AT&amp;T's already pulled a table under there. So, I don't know why they thought to bill us.
So, we had no idea?
Well, the one oh eight includes thirty-something thousand contingency. So, when you take that off, I think between AT&amp;T and United, it was around seventy. I don't have that piece of paper with me.
Mine?
Yes.
AT&amp;T was around forty, forty.
Yeah, trended.
And one was maybe thirty-something, like that.
Yeah, and it was around thirty-seven. And the reason why we haven't been billed, they, they have to connect to the lines that go over to the courthouse. So, until they make the complete connection, I don't think we'll see a bill until we see that.
And hopefully, we won't need the contingency. You know, that's just where you put something in in case something shows up.
If I'm not mistaken, one of the estimates that we could save on Friday and say, "It's gonna cost us more if you don't bring that ground," that can lower.
It did.
Still seeing wires up there, Buck. When is it all underground? Have I given you a final date yet?
No, dealing with AT&amp;T is like dealing with guns. It could happen today, it could happen a month from now, but we're just kinda at the mercy of when they're gonna.
Because you can't do that final street work, you need to do it in front of garage stuff till those are gone.
Really, yeah, I need to get the poles out of there. Right now, it's still taking to get equipment in there and everything else. It's, it's not safe to do it while it's still there. And until they make the final connection going across the street to the courthouse, you'll see those poles.
The garage, I guess, they're completely shut down. Right on the transformer. I had school free type board anymore. And it says the transformer. That's, that's loaded.
The street, will they be able to drive on that stamped concrete too? I mean, if we don't close that street, we have, we've never voted to close that street completely to, to road traffic, but we tend to be pedestrian-friendly, I think.
Yeah, we better figure that out before we put down concrete because, you know, our, our thickness of the concrete, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna not close it and have it drivable, we probably don't wanna do stamped concrete. We probably don't wanna do that. We probably wanna just use straight concrete. But it'll be able to handle a vehicle. We had to make it to be able to handle a fire truck if they needed to get in there and any other emergency vehicle. So, but it's not meant, not gonna be meant for daily traffic.
That will be simply.
Thank you, Buck. Any other questions?
Okay, the last page, there had been some inquiries about debt service. Our current debt service for capital outlay notes, of course, we don't have any bonds, but capital outlay notes, as of this past June thirty, we only had four hundred and ten thousand. At the end of next year, we're only gonna have fifty-five thousand. Now, I did think of this after I did this sheet. Just full disclosure, we do have some leases. But to me, as a non-accountant, I consider it more operating because it's police body cam leases and car cameras, and it's not a lease to own. It's kind of like you have to lease it forever because it's the service part that you want. So, I don't really consider that. I mean, they're five-year leases, I think, but you'll have to re-up them or you just won't have body cameras. So, I forgot to put that on there, but the capital outlay notes were down to very small
Questions, folks?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Comment.
Okay.
And we're talking about some big projects, big enough, and we're talking about all this that's had to go paid. So, also want to bring it to the mayor and council as a teaching that as of the end that we make, our local option sales tax has grown seven to five, five percent higher than anticipated, which has generated an additional four hundred and seventy-one thousand. And that's still with the month of June proceeds to come in. And just to give an example, last year, June, we received six hundred and fifty-three thousand for one night sales tax. So, that would certainly kick us over to the seven million margin of occupancy.
All right. Any questions? The four-ten, does that include that, what we owe that park for that long-term, Amoresco, was that what, what's it?
Amoresco.
Include that too?
I know it's the industrial park, and I think it might be Amoresco was the, or the two, but let me look real quick.
That thing should end pretty soon, shouldn't it?
Yes, yes, because the only thing left after this, after this year is the industrial Yes, the Flume and the Amoresco both are paid off this year. And then all we'll have left is the fifty-five thousand for the last year of the industrial park. And I mean, if y'all chose to, we could pay that off early, but just if we go by the normal schedule, that's what's, and that was Flume too, and the Amoresco. Thank you, Sarah.
I had sit down, worked on it last night, then worked on it again today up at City Hall. Fiscal year twenty-six, we're looking at spending, not counting that, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for hotel motel, one point three nine eight, almost one point four million dollars that we've added into budget for all of these projects that we just discussed. So, that's, that's part of that budget, one point four million dollars that we're gonna spend. We add the two hundred and fifty, it's almost one point seven million. Looking toward the future, what we're not budgeted for for twenty-six, Fairfield Pipe, one point eight million, River Overlook, one point five million. Of course, we hope we're gonna get grants and things for those, soccer fields, airport projects at Riverview District, these sidewalk projects. We hope we don't want anything else in that Ducks On access road, that situation. We're looking at four point, almost four point two million dollars that we're gonna be on the, we'll be owing on those projects for the future. And that means past, past fiscal year twenty-six. So, we'd be looking at that next year when we do the budget, how to take care of those items. So, I wanted to sit down and calculate all of those up, just kind of let us know what we're looking at when we're looking at other large projects and will we get a ten percent part that we have to pay or twenty percent or whatever. We just need to be careful on that. One of our small-town mayors told me the other day that they had to cancel all of their grant projects because they don't have the funds to pay the ten or the twenty percent of the grants. So, I thought, I needed that. But that's, that was the numbers that I've been putting together. Kay, thank you so much for all the numbers you've done, and Scott and all of the other part of our staff that's done that. Any other questions about all of that? We're running roughly nine million in reserve now, something like that, nine or ten.
Well, I, I don't have the final numbers for June thirty yet. I should have those in about a week. I should have them in about a week. But when we approved the budget, we were estimating to end the year at about eleven million. It was nine in the first draft, I think. And then we went back and kind of changed some things, and it's, we're expecting to end in about eleven point four million.
Now, probably our budget for next year would be what, thirty million, maybe? Close it?
Right, right around there, yes. And of course, the sales tax will swing one way or the other.
So, we need to keep close to ten million dollars in reserve to be what MTS said is the third of the year.
I think our local, I think our local guideline is twenty percent, I thought, yeah.
But that's just ours.
That's just ours, yeah. We want to be more.
Yeah, we're more than the state mandate.
Because we're trying to be more conservative, but.
Well, I just want to make sure we have enough because if we decide to go pursue these large projects and borrow money, don't we need, that'll be a factor in how much reserve we have as far as the rates and so forth if we get to my line. We want to get the best available for basic purposes.
We're at double eight, three, five rating, which is significantly good. I think they, everyone we've talked to informally have all rated on a five rating.
We want to keep that. And we always have to look at those unforeseen, such as our floods. Yeah, always. All right, so we're ready to move forward? Okay. B is to review the history of our development work for our new city facilities. And the A portion of that is MTS Fire Department report twenty-twenty-two ISO considerations. We had a packet that Lisa and the other folks have put together for us. Hope you had a chance to look over that, Scott. Do we have folks here that's gonna walk us through, or you will walk us through all that?
What I'd like to do at this time, Kate's gonna get to rest in a minute, and Kate and Lisa, they come to walk us through the fire department report.
This is our chief, fire chief, Matt Doe. Good afternoon, chief.
Hello, mayor, how are you? It was very short. We killed several. I'm sorry, we harvested. When, when we started talking about, and it became apparent that it was a city authority, first thing we did was had the MTS come in and look at possible sites and areas for our relocation of our headquarters, or well, it's currently our headquarters. As many of you know, we're geographically very constrained as it pertains to our, the city's entire infrastructure. So, that's why we had MTS come in and look at possible sites and see the positive or negative effects that those would have, or could potentially have on our ISO coverage area. So, that's what we, we had them do. And then, then they actually took, as you can see on here, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, they took our current overlap and what our current coverage areas look like and how. They took our current overlap and what our current coverage areas look like and how, especially the coverage area between, uh, station one and station two, how those fire halls overlap would be affected. Okay, and, and when I say overlap, that's if you look on any of those diagrams and you see where it's not really a circle, but for the lack, uh, for the sake of conversation, that, that shape that kind of resembles a circle. If they, if it does more than touch, if it does have an overlap, that is, is considered wasted area there because you're not, you've got double coverage where the, the ideal thing to do would be have your coverage areas just touching. So I'll be happy to answer any questions on that. Uh, and the thing, if, if you look up on the board right now, that's our current, um, or on the monitors, that's our current coverage areas, uh, for our engine company, which is a mile and a half. Uh, and you can see, and it's also annotated in this study, even back in 22, was our need for a fourth, uh, fire hall right there on that 231 corridor to tie in, uh, between station one and station three. So, um, while we did that, we took that as it exists and then went back and looked at different sites to find out which area would be, uh, the best for us. Some of those sites are not even in play anymore because of other plans for the properties. Uh, and we were looking at vacant properties or properties that were partially vacant in the, the area of the downtown station. Lisa, you got anything you want to add to that? And this was presented to council at that time before we did really anything else that we've done so far.
So one of the properties that we're currently considering, it looks like it's basically where site A was in the SimK study, which was their top choice.
Within a couple hundred yards, yes. Which was the maximum benefit for the fire park. So in layman's terms, a little bit west helps us. Of course, it's going east. There, there was another side that was, that was a little bit further east, but it was south. So we kind of had a trade-off on the, the south side of town. Uh, but the site A was the most efficient. You can see it makes that overlap area just a little bit smaller.
Questions, Charlie? Here you go. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, B is the council strategic plan for 2023, and the priority was placed on the new police and fire department headquarters. Uh, has this been on the docket for the last 20, 30 years? It's like, uh, flood pumps and everything else. Does anybody want to kind of fill us in on that strategic plan? I remember when we, there's a bogey and things on that, look at, looked over the notes, Scott.
Yes, sir, I'll be brief because you all are very familiar with this. We had our strategic plan in 2023. And the, uh, most important priority in the mayor and city council's lives was the self-tax, as she mentioned. Of course, that's been addressed and it's being addressed. The, uh, also switching up flood pumps, which is, y'all just heard, they're dominating, moving forward very well. And then the very next thing is place and fire facilities at a top priority. And, uh, also including stairfield, soccer complex. And, uh, it's so important to top flood pumps on there twice. But that, that was your priorities in 2023. And then if you'll recall, although the plan has not been adopted, the 2025 plan had place and fire as a top priority, you know, finishing out some of the projects.
Questions?
We've always looked at, have we always looked at it as a combined building or did we ever look at it as two different facilities? You know, I'm talking about.
Two different.
Yeah, yeah. You have any plus or minus on that, pros or cons on that? Do you want it all to be at one? We've got our deputy chief, the fire police department.
Yeah, okay, there, we think we, with the design of the building, we could incorporate some joint use areas. And so, uh, like I said, we, we pretty much live together now.
You are pretty close. All right, uh, Scott, what else do we need to do there? Anything?
Uh, no, sir, we can move on to C.
All right, C is contract with the TLM Associates Incorporated, architectural design firm, May of 2023. We've got those folks with us today. And so, uh, if you want to fill us in on those things, we appreciate that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And Ginger?
Yeah, mayor, well, let me just give you all a little rundown.
Okay.
Actually, Mary, you and Sephora, you may not actually remember this because the, the actual beginning of entering into a contract with architects started actually in the fall of 2022. Um, so those of you that were with us will remember, I think Lori let out forbid RFQs probably in October or so.
Uh, it was actually on the study session, the permission let them out in October 22.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It's in, I'm sorry, I'll be. And then, um, I think we changed them in May.
We actually approved the contract, but so, so even before you did your strategic planning, um, the reason why I go back that far is because the original thought at that time was really, you were reaching out to the architectural firms. Uh, and I think we had a submit and we picked three, interviewed three, and we then settled on TLM out of, um, Jackson. Was to do, and what we called our group was the facilities task force because it was not just police and fire. That's what I want to keep in mind is that we were also looking at really sort of a study. We wanted, we wanted expertise to come in and look at the buildings that we have. We wanted to look at public works. We wanted to look at police and we wanted to look at fire. We wanted to look at city hall and sort of get some ideas. And one of the things that a park that we did enter the contract with TLM is, is for them to do a facility study. And by the time, because, so we started all that in October, November, December. By the time then March rolls around and you do all, you do your strategic planning. After strategic planning in 2023, y'all were like, we don't need a facility study on police. We don't need a facility study on fire. We already know. We want to go. And so that was one of the things that we had actually included in the RFQs, but we eventually just took out because we, like, y'all, we don't even need it. We don't want it. We do want it on city hall. We do want it on the, not police, uh, fire headquarters, but the other fire hall number two and, and public work. So after you all confirmed and committed what you wanted to do in March of 2023 on your strategic plan, we entered into the contract and Lisa has a copy of that in the documents that you handed out. And so that is pretty much a standard type of architectural contract for them to walk us through, um, evaluating our facilities, the ones that we pointed out we wanted to do. But by, by the time you had done your strategic planning, you really wanted new police and new fire. And that's what the contract includes is for them to do schematic, design work and construction drawings for new police and fire. Now, as a part of the team working with T, what I mean, staff team, police, fire, other support staff, um, they eventually came to the decision they thought it was best to do a municipal complex together.
Right.
That's kind of how it started or, or how it got to be. It didn't start that way. And it's still that if you all determine you want it separate. So that is what the contract is with, um, TLM is for them to do those, to basically walk us through those three phases. Schematic design, the actual design and then construction documents. And so right now, we are just in phase one and the contract, of course, for their, and the price for their services is dependent upon the cost of construction. So right now, I mean, we started out, I think, at 17 million. Is that right? Ginger, I'm, I'm sorry, I should tell you, our folks are here. Randy McKinnon in the back, Chris and Ginger are here if you have any questions for them. Um, so that's why we entered into that contract. You all coming out of March, of course, not Betsy and, and Mr. Glavine, you weren't here. But we came out of that very pointed in March to 2023 was moved.
Yeah.
And we'd already begun the process of the RFQs and already were interviewing folks. So we were pretty much all ready to sign the contract by the end of your strategic planning in 2023. We approved it in May. And so they hit the ground running after that and have spent a lot of the time. And I think that's kind of going on into the next item. So that's where you've got a contract right now. We've paid a considerable bit on phase one and phase one, of course, is the schematic drawings. And each change of phase, part of what we have to do in the contract is go back and look, has the price changed? That's a part of it. And we would be entering into an amendment if necessary. I mean, there's, there's things that we have to do at the end of each, each phase. Do we approve what they've done? Put our standard approval order we need to change? And also if we need to make any changes to the actual compensation package. So we're still right now in phase one. We've not gone past phase one at this point.
Can you refresh my memory on what phase one actually entails because I thought that was.
Schematic design.
Yeah, is that, does that include where, uh?
It's not deep detailed drawings. That's the next phase. We get real detailed.
I thought there was a hardware, uh, property that's being searched or feet.
Well, they, they've helped us with that all along. And this is, I'm glad you have great, quick questions. I should have already said this. Our contract with TLM, we didn't hire someone to actually go find property for us. That was not their job. And they have worked very closely with our staff members. As our staff members were trying to find property, we were always consulted with them about what they thought, what we're trying to put on this property would go there, trying to evaluate that. So, so it wasn't a part of the contract that they actually lead or be responsible for site selection. Uh, but they have been participating with us and have supported staff, let's put it that way. Very much in that because that's always a part of it that you've got to know. Is the site going to be able to be support what it is that you're trying to build? So. So I mean, there's, there's people that you can actually go out and hire and will do all, all of that for you, but that wasn't a part.
So the schematics have to fit the property. I mean, that makes sense. So how do you draw that up when you don't really have a site?
I'm sorry.
How do you draw those schematics up? How, how do you do that? The property isn't really in concrete. This is where it's going. This is the design that fits that piece of property or what have you.
So. I think your staff, so I think your staff, uh, thought that their mandate was to go find the best suitable property and to bring you back a design schematic on that property. And that's what they did.
Okay, so that was phase one. So the schematic part is over. I mean, is that?
I don't think we finished schematic technically, Ginger.
We haven't after the discussions involving the library property. Um, we just sort of stopped to wait and see how property things were going to, um, resolve themselves so that we would be able to make sure that we were moving in the right direction.
Because if you.
The schematics, the judiciary for that one property, you just didn't technically include them on another property.
So.
Thank you, Jen.
Um, so there's a couple of phases to the schematics. One is programming, which is sitting with each department determining what the actual needs are for the new building. So we've got the program. That does not change regardless of where the building goes. I'm going to use the library property for conversation because everybody knows what that property looks like. Uh, there is a significant slope to that. So our building design on this, on the library property was what I'm going to call a two and a half story design because we needed it to work with the slope. Another property might not have a two and a half story design. It might be a two-story design where we have less underground stuff because we don't have the slope that works with that. So while we have the program information, we know all of the components. We know who they need to be adjacent to. There would probably be some reshuffling of the boxes, if you will, to make sure that we're fitting the new property in a better seating location to seat the site.
But it doesn't have to be totally huge asylum.
It does, the building would be a very different, potentially a very different layout because I have a part of a floor that has to come up and join another floor, if that makes sense. But it's not completely starting from scratch as though it's safe. Does that make sense? Like I am taking a very good part of the layout of the spaces and I'm relaying them out so that my circulation, wherever my front door is, my front door may not be in the same spot. My front door at the library property was very on my narrow access and I was walking the length of the building. A different property, I might be coming in on a long access. So all of those things, site circulation, um, public circulation, how people enter the building, where they're parking. All of those things are going to sort of dictate that. But then, for instance, like with police, like I've got, um, you know, CID group, they're in a pod. My main admin is in a pod. My patrol is in a pod. I can sort of take those pods and rework the building layout, but the building in general would be completely different, I would, I would suspect. Did that answer a question? Did that make sense?
So we hit the place now with that phase one. We have no property. We have a clue where we're really, where we're going to put it. Do we need to move on with the contract with TLM? Do we know where we're going? Know what I'm saying?
That's what.
I'm just asking.
That's what we hope you're going to tell us.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any problem. We look, our, our property may be doing a good job, but we don't have anything.
That requires city staff to get really get there on the ground, boots only going on and start.
Like Scott said, we're going to make that decision in just a few minutes. We'll look at.
But, but you still need these people to, this entity to, for consult. As, as you look, they're still consulting.
Sure, absolutely. Yes, we're still in that contract, yeah. That would be a part of it. Depending on, if, if you saw, you see all the discussion items, all those things, not necessarily you have to vote on that order, but you all need to be discussing all that after we do our presentation today. And that would be a part of it. Moving forward with that contract.
Okay, so that was C on there when we talked about that contract, our architectural design. Uh, D is TLM Associates work with the city facilities task force, which we touched on that. But is it covered completely?
They can't, uh, say they need can do, we need to get, or. Our Ted King, you want to make a few comments on where we've been, where we're at.
Um, so back in April, um, when I did the presentation regarding the facility study, um, at the end of that, there was some, um, sort of a rollout of what we had done on police and fire at the, the library property. Can I also sort of walk through the other properties that we had looked at? It did start out, um, as, um, Attorney Ginger had stated just a little bit ago that we were looking at police and fire possibly separate. Um, we looked at several properties. Um, fire, as Chief has stated, is much more specific in their location. So that was obviously a priority if fire was going to be by itself. Um, and we laid out several properties that we had looked at and I told you the pros and cons of sort of why we had nixed those off of our list. Um, and then the first property that we actually looked at, the first one that we did a small little layout on was the ball field property. Um, that was originally our first choice. Um, when we sort of got to talking about budget, it was almost immediately a little bit cost prohibitive at that time to continue that discussion. So that's when we left that conversation. Um, and then we looked at other properties. At that point, we had identified several. We looked at those and come up with the library property being our second option. Um, as far as. library property being our second option, as far as location in the downtown area, location, co-locating both police and fire. We worked with the, with the task force on really sort of trying to get through that, that phase that you've just identified, the, the schematic phase. And then, what's the library location? That seemed to hit a roadblock. We sort of just put a, put a pause on, just so that we weren't continuing to work on something that just wasn't, as you said, it just wasn't, the property is, we're at a point where the property is going to be very indicative of what the building layout is. So, without that, we need to pause, not spend money and time on something that we know is not going to work wherever it goes. What else do I need to...
Question?
Anyone? You just said what I said, do we acquire a property where it stands to?
All right. The current status of the project, then, it just kind of had a hold right now until we find property, right?
Well, I'm sorry. Yes, I just wanted to point out again to you, they came and presented in April, not one, their facility study, because they're still at due, City Hall and Public Works. So, they presented that. And at that time, they presented what was going to be, in accordance with their contract, this is the, the land and the building sort of schematic design. Presented that to you in April, and then in May, you all voted for city staff to go immediately and go negotiate for that site. So, we're still underneath city staff and city to go look at our minutes. I still wonder what we're underneath. You all know, since May, we've spent quite a bit of time in discussions with this particular site, has four different landowners. And so, we've been in negotiations with them. We've run into several different, you know, issues that have come up with a couple of those, including, you know, some back and forth negotiation about, you know, one entity wanting to get the road, it's various things. So, based on just sort of informal feedback from council, I think staff has made the decision, hey, we may need to just fault. You've given us the direction to go buy that property, but we've informed you, let's just, let's just stop until we could basically have this meeting.
All right.
For you all to get your heads around it, from a big picture, and then talk about all these issues, say yes or no, give us direction, whatever. So, that's kind of where we are right now. That goes along with what Mrs. French said about, we decided just to stop until this is resolved. So, that's where we are from what we've done.
All right.
All right, Jamie, thank you so much. All right, C, it's going to be discussion and vote, district directive for public safety building projects. And we've talked about a couple of things here already, but at this point in time, the council members kind of make a motion of direction on the following items. Continuing motions would depend on the votes. And A would be a priority, continue to move forward with a new police station, fire station as a top priority, or change priority status and reschedule for later fiscal years. What's everybody's thoughts? Do we need to continue that this is a top priority, or do we need to change it?
Do we have any viable options as, as far as land goes? The only option we have is a ball, ball park property.
That's the one we had looked at closely.
Did we ever look at the parking lot beside the Richard's cap here? Didn't figure it up.
Same problem.
Yes, the same property owner, but isn't big enough?
And the problem with that whole area right there is the intersection. And the problems we'll run into with the I coming on to like ballpark.
Yeah, and that's that Tyson's good traffic.
So, the biggest question is, do we want to pony up the money it's going to take to get that property at this time?
That's one of your questions. I know there have been other, other folks that brought up to us maybe methodology of looking at land in different places, you know? And that's also assuming that you do a joint police and fire. So, once again, these are just, these issues here in front of you.
My thought is, if we keep picking, if we keep picking the property issue down the road, it's been a double up with Diggas last time. Y'all started looking at it a few years back. It was $16 million. And then, now, go to the property, it's almost doubled what it was two years ago. But wait two more years, it's going to keep increasing, and then we're just going to keep kicking down the road. We've kicked it down the road about 20 years of where they've needed to be in new, in new facilities. So...
I agree with Councilmember L. Our first priority right now, I think, would be, we've got to find the right property. And we've got to try to make this purchase. I would like to, in my first term, if we could get the property purchased, or, and we've already got a leg up with, with the, the TLM already doing some designing thing, but I would like to just, our priority be, let's find the piece of property that is the perfect piece of property. We're looking at 20, 30, 40, 50 years, that fire department, the police department's going to be there, so let's get the right piece of property. And we need to get it as quickly as possible because of cost. Or we may have opportunities that just now came available that we might, we might be able to look at.
Looking at cost perspective too, because having them together, it probably saves a little bit of administrative costs, having some combined usage, keeping them together. But then, you also have to look at the ISO rating for fire. You're looking to the area that you do make do for that. So, there's only a few properties at this point.
If I may, may I jump it back, jump it on now to number C about site selection. Y'all brought up about property. And I think, I think this is something that needs to be set at the table, and you all give us direction on. The staff, as well as TLM, have always understood, their contract was for you to go find what they thought was the best piece of property and design it and bring it to you. What they have found out is that we've had more questions from you all about property. And so, I think some of you may have thought that you yourself were going to be given an array of properties to pick from, and that's not how it was set up or designed. That was not how the process was going. So, I think that may be something you want to talk about right now. If property is your go-to, and I, and let me also say, it could be your priority that we will pick back up design, you know, a year from now, but we're going to buy that property right now, whatever you all decide. But staff needs to know, what are your expectations about how the site selection will happen? Because I think that is what has caused confusion and goes really back to your, to your question, Councilwoman Ewing, when you talk about, how did you know about site? You needed, the building needed to be designed to the site. I think everybody here at staff thought that's what they were supposed to be doing, is to bring you not only the building, but on the site.
Go ahead, Scott.
If I could reiterate, that's why we started the presentation today, with how we started with the project, which was having MTS come down and look at possible sites and recommend, do our homework upfront on what was going to be the most plausible for that. So, that, that's where we started before we did anything. And so, just keep that in consideration. Nobody just went and looked for random property. We, we tried to do our due diligence upfront as we were directing.
And also, as a follow-up to the city attorney's and fire chief's comments, the 2023 potential plan, when it's talking about police department headquarters, the responsibility, city manager, police chief, and acquisition, city manager, police chief, and it goes all the way through funding, same way with fire department headquarters. So, we need clear guidance on how you all want to move this, if you want to move it at all.
And, and we looked at, and everybody at this table should know, the functionalities may not know, but we looked at a piece of property, and they call it the library property. We, we looked at that, that was going to be a site, and we were going to put City Hall there also. We were going to try to put all of it in that, in that location. But we went in, we ran into all kinds of hurdles and obstacles and people complaining about, that's not where we want it to be, and that's the library, they don't want sireens going off with the library next to the door to it. And Fly Art Center had some questions about that, and then traffic, they were talking about traffic and all kinds of things. So, we, we went at it like we were going to get that piece of property, and I think we could have done it for a pretty good price. But then, we had Chevyville Water and Sewer wanted us to close the road. We went into all kinds of issues. We're trying our best to get there, but then we run into all these issues of, of, no, we don't want you there, and this and that and the other. We're trying to do the best we can to serve the people of Chevyville, and we know Matt, we know Jan and Pat, those folks, they need a new location, and they needed it for 20, 30 years. Again, my thoughts are, right now, we just need to look at the property, the perfect property for the police and fire department. Now, B of this decision is, do we need a combination facility? If we're looking at property, could we put the police department here, and could we put the fire department here and them still operate? And can we get a better price on property if we did that? So, that's what the council, that's what we need to look at. To me, I would leave that open if it worked out with, with fire department, police department. If you could be separated and we could buy a property, I won't put them on a main street. We talked about another piece of property, put them off of a main street. If you're going to build a 30 or 40 million dollar building, put it where the police, the people know where it's at, and they can look at it and they'll say, there's my fire department, there's the Chevyville Police Department, instead of having to go down this street to find out where the police department is or the party. Some people don't know where the City Hall is right now on the square. So, we want to build the first, a first-class facility. We want the first-class location. And it's been 20 or 30 years, and maybe they've run into exactly the same things that we're running through. The next item says site selection. That's, I think, where we're at. Let's find a site. And then, Ginger and the TLM group has done a great job. They've got kind of a schematic of what we need if we do it together. You could probably split that if you had to, if we went to two locations. But we need to find the right site, and we need to get it purchased as quickly as possible so it doesn't... Or maybe we need to go out to somebody and they say, yeah, we'd like for that to be on our property. When we talked to this last group, I don't know that we even said to them, would you like to donate some of that property for the fire and the police department? Let's don't leave that out of the negotiation. If we have to meet privately, privately with those folks, let's do that. Let's say, you know, we need new police, police and fire departments. They're growing, the, the needs are there, the city of Chevyville is growing, we all need to do something to work together. Would you be willing? And if it was my property, I don't know if I would or not. That's up, we looked at two pieces of property, I think, with the library where we're going to have to purchase, and you negotiated with those folks as far...
Four of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Or four, four of us.
Am I making any sense? Are you understanding what I'm saying? We've got to find the, the place first.
Well, it sounds like to me, Mayor, if I may, because I've been the one doing some of those negotiations, I wasn't, from the very beginning, there's, there are sites that I know, police, fire, TLM have looked at that I, well, early on, that I wasn't involved in. It sounds like what you were proposing more is that the methodology of site selection be changed. In other words, you want different property options brought to you. Is that, I see a shake of somebody's head. Is that what I'm hearing from this council? That you want different properties brought to you with an approximate price and let you decide what the property is from a host of properties?
Well, I think the first thing we're going to have to decide is if we're going to keep them together, which is cost effective, or separate them, which is more costly to get them, because it's going to cost more, because you're doubling some of the buildings. And then, at that point in time, you're going to limit yourself in keeping them together to the size and location of properties because of his ISO rating. And as in this study, it showed that, that secondary property that we had been looking at, it maximizes his coverage area by not overlapping correctly. And then, so that was right in the correct area that it needed to be. So, I guess we've got to figure out whether we want to keep them together or separate them.
You're correct, because the land, the, the land has to be larger to put both of them on. So, you could potentially, you, you broaden the look, the range of property to buy for police, not for fire, but for police, you do.
That would be the only, that would be the thing that would happen in fire, and they were separated.
Thank you. Should, should that be the first?
Yeah, we need to do that.
Site selection and deciding what we want. And in that site selection, one of the things I would say is, do we stick with, we've got to have this much for both of them? Or can we find two that will still be close enough? Site selection is the number one, I think.
I think, well, let me say this. You mean, you could get, you could tell us, do both. Go find individual properties and go find properties that could be combination and let y'all look at that. It'll take more work, but that's, that's completely...
So restricted in the distance from where the fire department is, where the fire department can be. There's only so much land within that distance, and there really is only one piece of property that really is big enough to put everything in. Now, I'm not opposed, I agree with Betsy that, you know, I'm conservative. The price, I think, is very high, but it's not as high as it will be down the road. Maybe we should work it, let's try to buy the property and get it paid for and own it, and then we can, we know all this other would be an exact, and there wouldn't be any guessing about it, how we build the land, the property on it, I mean, building on it. But once the city owns the land, then we are 100% control.
Ready to go.
And if that piece of property is agreeable to enough members of this council, then I'm not, I'm not opposed to buy it. I mean, yes, it's high, but it ain't going to get any, it's not going to get any cheaper.
Mayor, what, what I'm hearing you say, though, is you, you don't want various properties brought to you. You're ready to go buy one of the two properties.
Well, there aren't very, I mean...
Particularly for fire, yes.
How many, how many pieces of property, you've been looking, how many pieces of property?
There's very little for fire, but I'm hearing from other people at the table, I want to see options, and I may want to see options where police and fire are split. So, we got to hear what the majority of you want. It sounds like to me, you have, you're like, I'm ready to go buy the other property.
It's going to cost, it means like, if we're going to double our cost for building two buildings, it's going to be cost prohibitive.
I don't know if it will double our cost.
But you have to build the administrative and all the other ancillary things that they were going to share. It wouldn't double the cost, but I mean, you are duplicating some spaces that could be shared.
Yeah. It don't make sense not to put them all together. And, and if you, and if you go to one property and say, this is the one we need, they're going to name their price. You, you messed up when you did that. You, you need to kind of open it up, and here's properties we can choose from. And then, they would say, if they wanted to buy a police part, or wanted to sell it, then they'll kind of come down on their price. I know this last property that you folks looked at, yeah, it had jumped in, in, in price quite a bit, because they thought that they were the only game in town. We can't put ourselves in that position. We can't.
But on the flip, Mayor, how many pieces of property, they have within the perimeter of the fire department?
Have we looked at all of it? Have we looked at everything in it that meets the fire department standards? Have we looked at every bit of it and just said, would this property be available? Would, would you sell it for this? Are you going to? All of those kind of things, then get the, but we, we can't, you can't lock into one like that. If I go to the car dealer and say, I got to have blue car, and it's got to have six tires on it, and if there's only got one on it, they're going to give you whatever price they want. Same thing on this, I think, I think we, we, yeah, I wish we'd maybe bought it a couple of years ago, but I still want it on the main road, my personal opinion, to put it on the main road.
There's going to be other properties that are around here that might be available eventually that we could open up.
Well, we see, we just don't know. We just don't know them. We just don't know them.
Can we please have a vote? No, I'm serious. Because this council voted to go to property A and negotiate. But this council instructed to go to property B and negotiate. And so we're swinging in the window here. When I say we, I'm talking so many people here. So please give, tell us what you want. And let's have at least four votes to ratify it.
I don't know what the property is for. Anybody told me how we're going to pay for it yet?
Does it make them a bond?
Look at me.
Okay, can you do a bond of some kind?
A bake sale, I think.
How we going to pay for it? The property, so we find the property, how we going to pay for it?
And I just, I gave my opinion, because I didn't get a chance to vote. The mayor only votes when it's a tiebreaker. So I, but I, I wanted to let you know what my personal opinion is. That doesn't mean, you guys have got your own wards, you've got your own people that you're representing. We're all representing the whole city of Shelbyville. But I want what's best. We waited all these years to build it. That's like the flood pumps. We didn't ask for, we want the, the second-best flood pumps or the third-best flood pumps. When we went to order them, we wanted the best flood pump. And that's what we want for the fire, police, that's what I'm hearing for the fire, police. The best property, let's get that property first. He needs a vote, though. We need a vote.
I agree.
Get them an idea of where to go.
I agree. Buy the property, and then we'll worry about building the buildings. Well, just like you said, like you said, the longer we sit here, the higher the property is going to get. It ain't going to go down.
It's going to go down.
I'll make a motion to keep them together and purchase them.
I think that's what we're voting on first.
Yeah, that good is a combo, buy the property and keep them together. I mean, look at the ballpark property and.
The ballpark property, I think, is what Mr. Turnbull was talking about. If you're ready to get to a motion, but I want to be very, very clear. If that's what you want, if he wants to move on, fine. But if you want options brought to you that you review and select, that's a different thing, and you need to make that as a motion.
We have a motion.
I mean, Madam Attorney, I thought that Chief said that muscrae is just not going to work because of that intersection.
No, the other side looks.
That's where we're going to grab a parking lot for that motion. Oh, Richard's looking.
So, so, so it could be that you're going to concentrate on what you've already started talking and look no further.
We had had informal, we had informal discussions with the ballpark property. Okay? Yes, I think that's what he's referring to, and I think that's what Mr. Christie is referring to. So I think that's what you're referring to. You need to be clear about what it is that you're making a motion for.
I agree with you. Are we calling it the ballpark property, or are we calling it?
Yeah, that's my other.
I don't know what's the name we're using.
We got informal discussions. Because it's easy, it's easy to call.
I agree with the mayor, because, you know, we're just taking the first option that, you know. You know, they're, they're, that's not the way to do discussions.
Well, they've been looking for a number, and I don't, I'm not opposed to let's wait until our, our appellate court thing comes out. If you want to know how to pay for it, if we happen to win, then we'll know how to pay for it.
We got all this other here, Phil Mike, river outlook, soccer, airport, sidewalk, dust gun. I don't, all of these things. I feel like I just want to.
What is it you, what do you think about?
We've made some great moves, we've made some great moves in the last two and a half years.
We've made great moves.
We've really moved the city forward.
We haven't made a lot of great completions.
They just want us to get the right one.
Well, we'll, we'll.
Y'all make that decision.
Next Tuesday, I'm not opposed to let's just bring this up Tuesday for voting on. I know that's not working, but a lot of people.
You can't, you can't vote on it next Tuesday.
Well, you can do it.
But you could do it for two weeks.
I can have a motion on the floor right now.
Who's the motion now?
Betsy.
Betsy, I don't think you finished your motion.
You restate it, please. You made, I have a motion to keep police and fire together and.
And go forward with negotiations on the ballpark property.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second, because I think Mr. Feld has something he wants to say, and I'd love to hear from him.
Really?
Yeah.
You've been all quiet. That's what it's all about.
Yeah, I was waiting for Henry to speak up.
I'm definitely one that believes that it's not married to the idea of putting fire and police in one complex. Yes, we save a few meeting rooms, conference rooms, bathrooms, to some extent, maybe. But you've still got separate administrative offices. You've still got separate needs for specific fire trucks and police. And I'm like the mayor, I want to build it, I want to build it right. And I don't want to have to be second guessing myself like the county did, because they tried to combine a jail and a courthouse and stick it out in East Jesus somewhere.
That's right.
If you know it in another 20 years, they're going to have to build another jail. And they've got the courthouse stuck out there. Anyway, but that's Monday morning quarterbacking on that one. And I don't want to see us do that. So the fire department, to me, is the number one thing that's restricting the distance from down.
Pick a property, pick multiple properties, I think there are.
Absolutely.
For just the fire department that suits that need. And that's where you can play on the values of the property, because you're going to have multiple sites out there to get a better price.
That's true.
And they're hard limited on combining them. Then focus on the police department. They can kind of be anywhere, you know, to some extent. But we don't, we're not married to this central core downtown district, maybe, where the police need to be. So that's why I would like to see multiple pieces of property.
So you're saying let's prioritize the fire department first and get that, because this is the most restricted.
Yeah, and like you, I think we can buy the property and pay for it sooner than later. And a capital outlay note and pay for it over five years or something like that.
It's a bit too financial.
It doesn't cost, an arm and a leg and a big bond issue and all that. So I think the money will be there. But we need to figure some sites. I think we maybe had too big a plan, combining both of them. And I'm hoping that the city hall type situation comes along, that we can take advantage of that.
That's exactly.
There'll be a lot of issues we'll swap one at a time.
So we have a motion and a second for us to go forward with the combination and own that property that, this ballpark property. Now we're ready for a vote. Correct? Any more discussion?
Y'all still want your motion?
If they still want it, you want that plan, you got to vote it. I just want to look at some of them.
All right. If, if we want, keep looking and all.
Let me just preface this and say, I'm ready to move forward, but, this is my but. I don't want to keep kicking the can down. So I mean, if we say we're not going to do it this time, are we going to, are we going to have discussions? Are we going to have properties ready for us to look at next month? To be able to vote on something next month?
On, not next year.
Or the next month, not next year.
Right.
Not six months from now.
That's right.
Get it done.
Get that property, that's right.
We are very famous, Betsy, I'll tell you.
She what?
The world famous for kicking the can.
I know.
That lady stood up here, the black feet, and asked her if we'd have a real walk before I died on day. See, when I got elected in '22.
And we need to vote, Mayor, hold a motion and second.
Sir.
As far as fire goes.
Yes.
There were four available options.
Okay.
Two of them are the ballpark and the library.
Uh huh.
And the other two, one was tucked in the middle of a neighborhood in a very bad place for fire.
Okay.
And the other one had a stream running directly through the middle of it. So there are four properties available for fire right now. And only two of them worked at all in the library, fell through.
Chris, don't I ask, those were properties that we know were for sale, is that correct?
No.
No.
We picked them in pass, picked them by the solve. There would be baking, none of them were listed. None of these properties were listed.
The reason I bring that up is because I think one of the things the mayor was saying is not just looking at property that's available, but go find property you like and then go approach those, approach those people. If you want to open that back up.
Whatever happened to the Austin Callaway? Was that still in Austin?
It's too small.
Too small.
That's the whole.
So, yeah, we were looking at size, something within the N task, and something that would actually work to make it work. We only had four properties, and we've run through three of them. They just, that's part of what our job is, is to do diligence, to see if they're going to work. And between streams, access, you know, location next to a highway, we've only found one that works so far. If you want more properties, you're most likely going to have to wait until something becomes available. So it's not going to be a next month thing, it'll be a next year thing.
That's what you could do.
Yeah, so that's something to think about, even not between splitting up. There's just not an availability for fire.
And we've had some other properties that came, became available, where Harvey Kennedy's garage is all the way to Deer Street, it's coming to Oakland. We may have some other properties that's according to what happens in the future. But we may have some other properties right inside the city of Shelbyville that are going to be available. Whether we'll have the option to buy them or not, we don't know. That's where we are right now. That's the reason I'm, I'm saying, let's get the best one and let's not.
Yeah.
Keep getting canned.
Yeah.
Keep looking.
And then we start to vote and then see where it lands.
If you can, Mayor, that whole one's got to go out.
You got to do what you need to do. We got, we got a motion on the floor and a second to move forward with the ballpark property. And it is time to take a vote unless somebody else has something to say on the council.
I'll just say in support of ballpark property, which I think I'm going to vote yes on. I mean, they've been looking at these properties since 2022, already cleared in the city of Little Louis. That's the only one they've found that works with the fire. So even if you don't put the police there, that's still a property that we should look at pursuing. And why keep kicking the can? So.
And that's 400 and how much thousand per acre? And it was 10 acres if there was any, so.
As the initial, but they'll negotiate.
350.
350 acres, but they'll negotiate.
How many acres did we figure we needed?
12.
It was 10, 12, wasn't it?
12, 12. But there's also other possibilities that we can use for that property as well. There's going to be extra land that we might can expand some other areas and do some other things with and involve maybe the community.
All right, so we're ready to take a vote?
I have one more comment.
Yes.
I'm not necessarily opposed to including that property as a multi-use.
Right.
But I still like the idea of just going single shot the fire department and the police department as a few more options to man. Good luck here.
Well, even on the property, we can still single shot.
Yeah, I don't think there's motion for him to stop.
Don't be so much rocking each other.
I'm sorry, no, I'm, I'm reading her motion, is this is what staff is doing. And it's the only thing that staff is doing.
Proceed with, proceed with negotiating.
Let's see if we can say it a little bit and.
It's better to go and proceed with other, looking at other things, because that property's not going anywhere except for going up. But it's not going anywhere, so it would be better to leave it open. So that, that, because if you direct the staff not to do anything and look at that muscrae, ballpark, whatever you want to call it, that's all they're going to do, because that's what the council says.
That's right.
If that's the only location that fire can go anyway, we're going to have to additionally get that, that place for fire.
It's anyways. Would you clarify, would you clarify your intent? I took it that the intent of your motion is that's where a combined police and fire is going to go. We need to go negotiate the property. That's what I thought, the intent of your motion, not going and looking at anything else. That's what staff's got to have clarity about.
Well, that, I think that's what I said was, I mean, I know that you said, I said staying combined and placing or giving y'all authority to go negotiate with the property under for the ballpark.
That's right. Neither of them. Right, I just want to make certain that you weren't leaving any doors open to go look at or bring out other property at this point.
So let's, can we amend the motion to?
She can.
You amend it.
Just buy the property and then.
Right. I meant, okay, just to go and go, not, not keeping the fire in them together then. I'll just take that part out of it and just look at giving y'all permission to go negotiate for the muscrae, but the ballpark property.
And what are we going to do for police then?
What?
What do we do for police?
Just do one thing at a time.
Well, no, I mean, I guess they're just figuring out, I mean, I don't know how to put that in there. Of course, not completely combined, but that would be my, that would be my choice.
Buy the property, get it locked. You see, anybody, Ginger, it don't matter, Matt and whoever, but you want me to say, why we didn't do this? You watch it, I should have said. You get ready, I'll take the load upon you. You think, you ain't going to see the show, we're not going to buy a cheap this property. It ain't going to happen.
They got, there's not going to happen. They're not going to.
Okay, they've already given us a price to start negotiations.
We do, I, I, I'm just trying to get clarity on methodology, how we're selecting property. And so.
Well, let's have this re, re, remotion, just that we are.
What is exactly that you want? It sounds like you all want multiple properties brought to you as options.
Let me read what I got. Betsy originally made a motion to keep the police and fire together and go forward with negotiations on the ballpark. Councilmember Blavins seconded it. She has now amended her motion to not keep police and fire together, but negotiate for the ballpark property. That's as far as I got, because it's been cited. I need, it has not been seconded. I didn't want to necessarily separate them. I didn't want to necessarily keep them together. I thought we were just going to leave that whole section out and just give y'all authority to go negotiate. That's what I was going to add.
Why should we make a motion to?
If you.
To negotiate the property purely.
Yeah, without the.
Without any other.
Okay. The muscrae property can facilitate both entities, is that correct?
Yes. Easily.
Why would you concentrate on them separately? It seems, it appears to me that that would be wasted property if you decide to separate the entities after concentrating on the muscrae, when you could put them both there.
Most entities, they ought to sell X number of acres, right?
That's correct, sir.
Yeah, so you can downsize, you can downsize.
Yeah.
Scott? If I may, we have opportunity here, whatever you all choose. But the property question, you could get four or five acres, up to 10, all the way to 14 acres. One of the reasons that the facilities task force was discussing additional acreage was because of the possibility of a facility or, excuse me, public works and maintenance building that has been called out with their entire name. And then also, I believe Trevor might want a little piece of it for.
Trevor wants a little bit of everybody's land. The firefighters need a splash pass.
You need to take a vote.
All right, Nancy, restate your motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to take a vote?
Police in here. Do you want, you need to address the police?
I think we just need to keep them combined and get the staff permission to go and negotiate the purchase of the ballpark.
So you're not making your motion.
No.
Okay. Is that what you second, Josh? What you just said? I'll stay with a second. Okay, any other discussion? Let's take a vote.
Okay, so just to be clear, the motion on the floor is to keep the police and fire stations together and go forward with the negotiations on what is known as the ballpark property. And I call your name if you have agreement with that, you'll say yes, please. Councilmember Feldhouse?
No.
Councilmember Yilly?
No.
Councilmember Noel?
Yes.
Councilmember Christie?
Yes.
Councilmember Blavins?
Councilmember Blavins?
Yes.
Councilmember Turnbull?
Yes.
That does pass with the vote. That checks doesn't all through.
So that means...
What is it?
That means that all of this motion was, it's, you do not look for any other bump.
That's correct. That's what you voted, that's what was voted on.
Now, if this property was the fault, they won't sell and things like that.
You'll be back, we'll be right back. I mean, you actually have to approve a purchase contract.
If it doesn't go through, then you can go back.
But you clarified, you want a combination facility, you've located, this is the site, you're changing your site location. We'll move forward.
Okay. All right. That, let's see. There you go. The status of the TLM associates incorporated contract, what is, discuss on that.
I think I kind of addressed that earlier, earlier on. We will obviously, once we get moved into a new phase, we'll have to have a, we'll have to have an amendment. They've actually submitted amendment to us for Musgrave, so we would have to bring that back to you. Obviously, the price is different, so that will have to come back to you. Scott, I don't know when you were planning on putting that on the agenda.
We'll have time to discuss.
Let's go get the property first.
Right here.
Okay, Kay?
Yeah, earlier, this is a different topic. Councilmember Yilly had asked me how much South Central Tennessee Development District fee was, and I've texted them, and it was $18,000 for administration, this is on the Deary Street sidewalk, some 2,500 for environmental. So I'm just going to say that so I don't have to email you now.
Thank you for that. Ginger is just clearing up the status of the TLM focused contract.
$18,000 and 2,500 for environmental.
$18,000 and administration. And they do a great job. And not only first.
All right, folks? If we got your attention? All right. Are there any other items that we need to cover?
Scott? Yes, sir. Mayor, did we pursue anything else at this time? There was discussion about the US Bank building. Did we have a purpose conversation regarding the US Bank building?
City what building?
City House.
City House.
And building homes and all of the above.
I would recommend to do that.
I think they have their own issues, and maybe we should wait until that gets sorted out.
But it'll be more information.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Did we have any announcements? Hang on, folks, did we have any announcements?
Any session agenda will go out on Saturday. I will be taking a day off on Friday, but if you need me, I'll have my phone, and we'll be back here Tuesday night to do this on local.
All right.
I'm going to turn this thing.